Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Conner.
Yes.
The call votes yes, motion carries. Okay, motion to approve resolution 2015-13, a resolution to approve a new freedom of information policy for the city of Cedar Springs. Ms. Conner.
I'll defer to the city clerk. This is extremely well versed with FOIA, but I'll make a couple of comments. There was a new law that was in effect, like first, it significantly changes municipalities' responsibilities in terms of timeliness and the cost that we can charge a nation. It's a significant change. We were fortunate in fact that our city attorney and his staff developed this policy consistently for new law and that it provided to us at all other communities they serve. And as I'm calling, it was all the requirements of the law. So the first part of it is just kind of synopsis of the changes and what we have to do now. And then the meat of it, the policy is there as well as all the different attachments and addendums that we need. So it's a pretty thorough policy properly headed by our city attorney. I don't know if Linda had anything more to say on it?
Um, not really. It's just, um, it'll be interesting. It requires us now to put a FOIA policy, a summary of FOIA policy on the city's website. They have to have it available at city hall for people to look at. We no longer can charge what we normally charge for parking fees. We're limited to ten cents a page. And not that we make money on FOIAs anyway, but it puts a lot of more constrictions and constraints on us than we have had before. It's definitely on the side of the person making the FOIA request.
Okay.
Pretty much limited as to what we can charge in terms of time. Now we have to take the person who is the lowest paid employee in the city and use those fees for what I would have to, you know, do research for a FOIA request. You wouldn't be able to use what my money fee, you'd have to use the lowest paid person in the city, even though I might very well be the person that's putting the time and energy and hours into a researcher and have to do lots of guidelines and procedures that weren't in place before, but will make work.
Okay, so do we have to approve that?
We have to have to get it back by July first.
If you want to comply with the law.
Yep.
Yeah, if we want to be compliant.
I'll entertain a motion this time.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to adopt the policy as presented.
Support?
I'll support it.
I'll support it. Any further discussion?
I was just wondering if we were charged by Sluggett for this war that was...
He hasn't indicated that there was going to be any cost here. Always indicated that he was going to develop a policy, his firm wasn't, make it available to those that contract with him.
And then we got paid for it.
I was gonna say, I would assume we're gonna pay for it and it's following the state guidelines.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Ms. Conner.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Hopkins.
If we have to, yes.
Is that a yes or a no?
Yes.
Thank you. The call votes yes. Item D, motion to approve the dispatch agreement between Kent County and the city of Cedar Springs for dispatch services, first consideration. Chief Fraser.
In keeping with the timeframe, brief synopsis, there were some communities in Kent County that were not paying for dispatchs and there was quite a few that were. They sat down, Mr., forgive me if I pronounce this wrong, Delavio from the county administration, sat down with peoples and come up with a formula where everybody kind of pays their fair share for the next three years. At that time, they looked to increase the 911 surcharge on the telephone landlines. Hopefully that'll pass, but I don't see it being enough at 45 cents because everybody knows landlines are becoming pretty historic. Anyhow, we had budgeted $15,400 in our budget for dispatch expense according to the formula that Mr. Parent left us, left me with. With the county administration, they've narrowed that down to, and it's in your packet, they're gonna give us a 25% credit off the top for 2015. We pay 25%, 50%, and then 75%. And our $15,400 will come down to, the first year will be just shy of $3,600. So there's quite a substantial savings there and we will save through all three years to what was projected. So the only thing that I might mention, if I can get my papers repaired here, that the new methodology begins, for the ones that are paying now, that would include us, will become effective this year, this coming year. The rest of them that have not been paying will become effective January 1st, 2016. It says on the agenda, first consideration, but also in my letter from the county administration, it says that we need to return two signed copies by June 1st, which will be before our next council meeting. So I don't know how council wants to look at that tonight, you know, make a motion to waive the first and second consideration and vote on it tonight. It's a win-win situation for us, the city and the fire department, and it establishes some groundwork, some ground rules and some level playing field for the entire county. And I believe part of the formula was based on number of calls divided by square root of the subdivision of the third party and the fourth party.
And who's on third?
And who's on third?
So I would be willing to...
Who's on third?
Field any questions?
This is...
It's a good deal?
I think in the will of the council that we should consider waiving policy number 12 for this item.
I will make that motion to waive policy number 12.
Thank you. The move is second to waive this policy, to waive council policy number 12 for this agenda item. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve dispatch agreement between Kent County and the city of Cedar Springs for dispatch service.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve that as presented.
Okay, is there support?
I'll support that.
Ms. Powell, support. Any further discussion?
Just thank you, Marty, for the work you put into this and...
I'd like to stay here and stand here and say you're welcome, but I had no part of it. I was amazed that one of us presented to me a couple of weeks ago.
Well, then I take back that penny.
You're gonna get the blame, so you might as well take the penny. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the roll call vote. Mr. Hopkins.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Conner.
Yes.
Mr. Powell, she has motion carries. Moving on to item B, discussion regarding a financial contribution to Cedar Springs Historical Museum, first consideration.
Does someone just speak to it?
Do you want to see comments on that? Sure. And that was several of the board members in the group and it would relate to me that they worked with the museum was becoming difficult for them to fund the operations and asked if I thought the city may be willing to help with some financing. It was something that in previous years, the city had done matter and when things got tight, they had to discontinue. I did find out that Solen Township only contributes $4,000 and Nelson contributes $1,000. So they made a written request. It didn't include a specific amount of money. I met, or called, talked with Fred Young, who's on the board. And Fred's in the audience. If we had any questions, I'm sure he'd be willing to answer, but I just threw out the number of $300 a month, with the $600 annually. He said that would be looked upon favorably by the museum board of directors. He said that money would be used to pay for operational expenses, utilities, upkeep of the building, grounds, things of that nature. City attorney said that the city, the state law does allow the city, I'm gonna paraphrase the law, that we can expend public funds for the purpose of fostering any activity or project of which the council determined will advance a historic interest of the city. So the city attorney also recommended a written agreement between the city and the museum that contains language that the city would pay, whether it's monthly or annually, so long as the museum continues to plan and offer historical programs to residents of the city. We have no monies budgeted for that in the proposed budget hour. We just heard from the chief, fire chief, that our light item for dispatch is gonna be significantly more than we now need. So there would be monies available in the upcoming budget without an amendment to handle that request. So I would recommend to council that they approve this and authorize me to work with the city attorney to draft an agreement so we can just have on record that we're meeting the requirements of that law in terms of expenditures to support the museum. And one of the things I'll ask to be included in that agreement is where is a requirement that the museum board of directors or their representative come to council and give us an annual report so it's very clear on what they're providing the community in return for what public funding they're receiving. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. Ms. Powell, any further comments?
Just that I'm all for fostering historic activities and I love that museum and I'm glad we're kicking in for some support for them again and at last. Because I think as a community, we're more than just water going in and water going out. We have a, we have a real culture here that sets us apart from other communities. We need to support it, the volunteers and some money.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I actually, I think we should contribute the same to Solen. As long as we have it in our budget and we can afford to do that without Rob and Peter to pay Paul, I think that we should be able to contribute four grand to help them. I know that they, they're volunteer bases and they run short on getting things done. I've worked with them on, you know, some of the events for the chamber and, you know, they don't have staff to be open like on Saturday, which would be more, it's gonna be time to have that open. So if there's ways of something, like to fund to help that someday be possible and they could actually be open at weekends, I'd be all for it.
Thank you. Ms. Conner.
Just again, I agree to a certain extent with Mr. Perry, I did, with Mr. Hopkins. I don't have a specific number in my head, but I do feel like if the Cedar Springs Historical Museum that is housed within the city limits of Cedar Springs on city property is being funded at a greater rate by an outside township, that kind of says something. We definitely need to put some money into this. I don't disagree that that would be an appropriate amount. I would like to hear what their specific needs are. I guess that would be a...
I defer to Fred on any specific needs that this money would be used to address.
This is about the same amount. I wasn't here when this money was available. It was early on and really, I think it's about the same amount, you know. Most of the time, too, operations, facilities, however, I have a lot of, a lot of, but we have other opportunities. Our money comes in from donations and dues. We have small, like children, super organizations, suppliers, support, kids, people, you know, it's nine or four. We will, oh, my, that's, that's a whole lot of our funds to support them. We have the same, we have the best, you have the right, you have to have heat, you have to have water. So that's primarily what, when I talk to the board, they're talking, you know, water, you know, mowers, those types of things, electric, just general operations.
Do we not mow that now?
Yeah. Mow the whole park, right?
Right.
Right, that's what I was gonna say. Are we billing them for mowing that? Okay, so that was the part that just confused me when you said mowing. I thought, are we setting the bill for mowing the park? That's, I hope not.
But it'd be just those operations.
Okay. I wanna hear everyone is in agreement, the manager would go ahead and...
Yeah. Although I would agree with Mr. Hopkins of even, maybe even a little more money. If there's, if we could be clear about what it is they need.
Mike, sure, we could kick that when we can, but we need to remember all this money comes out of continuing to...
Yes, but I think we're talking about $400, $600 more?
I initially proposed $600.
And Solen is giving four?
Solen's giving four and Nelson's $1,000.
Okay, so they're $400 more than we are.
Yep. So is that the number that the council would likely be, $4,000 or...
I would be leaning towards that.
Should we go for a second consideration or...
Well, this is just a discussion.
Yeah, this is the first, we're just having that discussion.
I would say like the manager proceed with the negotiations, please, and have him bring back something to us for the next meeting. Is that suitable?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. We're gonna have the manager work with you and come to a resolution and we'll have it next month and we'll vote on it. Is that agreeable? Okay, yeah, the AC running, it's getting hot in here. Okay, everyone's in agreement with that item E. Moving on to item F, motion to waive council policy number 12, basically resolution, to act on resolution number 2015-17, approving the Cedar Springs Parks and Rec Association concert in the parks as a community event for the first consideration.
So do we need to...
We would need a motion to waive policy number 12 for the Parks and Rec concert series and as a community event for the first consideration and the next resolution, a motion would approve.
Don't they have another meeting before June 18th?
Yeah, Kevin, if I wanted to have a question though.
Okay.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to waive policy number 12 for that.
I'll make that motion.
Support?
Ms. Conner, support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. So the motion carries. I have a motion to approve resolution 2015-17, a resolution approving the Cedar Springs Parks and Recreation Concert in the Park as a community event.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve resolution number 2015-17, a resolution to approve the Cedar Springs Parks and Recreation Concert in the Park Series as community event.
Support?
Support by Ms. Conner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those pose same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item G, discuss regarding the proposal of the Cedar Springs Community Development Team to trade property on 158 Pine Street for city-owned property located on 116 Fifth Street. First consideration. This is discussion over to...
Mr. Mayor, can you ask, can you maybe speak to this?
Mr. Mayor, can you speak to this?
You're nice, huh?
Very.
Johnson's property, two pieces right here. This is Cox's property right here. We own a lot of the butts up against Kirk Becker's place on, this is his place over here. And we're proposing doing a trade this lot so you guys can let it together with 174, which should Christian organizations talk about, which would give more billable space on that lot for lot 116 down here, which has been told me that's not billable, but would help us as far as using it for the North Country Trail, access from CPA downtown. It would be just a good win-win situation for everybody. There is interest in this property up here for housing. Once again, like I said, so what it would do is increase the size of the property that the city has on Pine Street. And the call is a master plan. This proposal calls a master plan under sections B and E.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Man, Mr. Manager?
I don't see any issues with it. You know, we just have to work out the details with the city manager and I think as Kirk said, a win-win. Everybody's gonna gain from it and that's what you always try to achieve is a win-win.
Definitely.
It's just a matter of working out the details and I can work with her and the city attorney to figure out how we get this done and what we need to do and hopefully have something back for the next meeting, for the next meeting.
Okay, sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Anything, council's consensus to move forward?
Go ahead, bro, you got a question, please?
No, move forward.
Okay, now I'm here to talk to the next group, okay?
Yeah.
And you folks, now, do you have seen this? This was on display at community night? Yes, sir.
Motion, or discussion regarding a request of Cedar Springs Community Development Team regarding the use agreement for the proposed amphitheater to be constructed along Cedar Street on city-owned property. First consideration?
Okay, I'm the introduction.
Thank you.
This is the site plan, basically as we redone from 2007, the library had before. What we've gone and done is we pegged along with the library and like I said, this is a proposed only, please understand that, proposed site plan, the wide ground board, the amphitheater, that's gonna become an issue in the northwest corner that we're talking about. The board lot, that is also part of the master plan, is along the creek right here and the rain garden area is located in this area. So both of those three are gonna be coming at us. They all are part of Cedar Springs' master plan. All we're trying to do is help out the community of Cedar Springs and so on. You further do, hi, Tom.
Tom Holloway, and I'm here to talk about the amphitheater, but so we're asking this, we'll shorten, asking the city to respond to our use agreement that we presented to city council, just to clarify whose responsibility is whose and what we're asking the city for and so if you have any questions for us. We tried to get a picture, I don't know if that's possible or not. Did that work out, Linda, or no?
I ate one, but I don't know if we can switch over to the other guy.
So we have a, we have a proposal of what it would look like. This isn't 100% set in stone because we didn't want to move too far ahead without getting city's approval, so we spend money on plans and architecture if we don't necessarily. It's a, it'll be a little bit bigger than that. But here's a, here's a picture of what it would look like. It's, I think it's pretty sweet, actually. It's been really nice and I think it'll solve a lot of our issues.
Bad.
There we go. Solve a lot of our money issues, you know? It won't solve our parking issues though, because we're gonna have a lot more parking, more people coming downtown, that's what we hope, anyway.
What we're requesting as we move ahead here is permission from the city to move ahead with these ideas because it is city-owned property. But once again, it is part of the master plans that the city has established back in February, on the 8th of February, 2010.
Yeah, just reading, reading from page three on the master plan. The planned vision was Cedar Springs will build upon its small town character by upgrading and reinforcing the downtown as a quaint center for community gatherings, recreation, specialty shopping, and governmental services. So I think that fits right in line with what the city wants to do, create space for people to come and gather and to hopefully spend their money.
Hey.
You're welcome.
I guess at this point, I would recommend to council that they, I think it's supposed to indicate their willingness to allow an amphitheater to be located in that area and just pass staff to work with community building development team on the details. Because there are, you saw my comments on the use agreement that we said before, generally it's part of it, it's just working out the detail so we know what everybody, what the expectations are for everyone.
And we'll keep you informed every step we take, too. Our idea is just you'll walk along with us as we move forward.
Okay, I think the last presentation we thought was made several months ago, everybody was on board and I can believe we're still there with the floor we have.
I am, so am I, boy.
Any other questions?
My, my only question is...
You want to come, please?
My only question is, at what point do we need to kick this to the planning commission?
Once we get the site plan.
Okay, okay.
Once, once the agreement has come between the development team and the city, proceed to that.
Because this feels like planning, I see this and go, planning commission, setbacks.
Another day.
Yeah.
As soon as, as we move along and you guys, because of the city property we had, and I told you we had to have permission from council first. And so then what we're gonna do is basically from my rolling cross section, this will come, be pulled out and then all prints, ideas, thoughts will come, a, both of you guys first and then the planning commissioner as part of the site plan. But we'll be pulling pieces out of this as individual, as you'll see in two minutes.
Amazing.
Great, okay. I think everybody did have a manager, work with a manager and we'll come...
Yes.
Further, one more step closer.
And in conversation with that, we're on the same page as far as wanting the same thing for the city of Cedar Springs, you know? What can we have, what's best way to maintain it, upkeep it, costs wise.
Does this live on the internet somewhere where people could look at it?
It will be as we continue to move ahead. And we have not put money forth as far as buying the prints and that kind of stuff and talking to corporations. We're gonna need some of the people that we have because we have such a large cross section as part of our team. So we've got businesses that can help us to kind of cap the middleman a little bit on that. So as you guys give us approval, then time's running fast.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. That moved on from the amphitheater. Okay, our next item is item I, discussion regarding a request from the Cedar Springs Community Development Team regarding a use agreement for a rain garden sculpture and wetlands delineation on city-owned property, first consideration.
In the cross section, this is gonna be located right here by the fountain, by the way, which has been out so the runoff water is from the new library.
It is on our agenda, about midway down. I think anybody that wants to... Along with the amphitheater.
So the group has asked me, I'm Nicole Demal with Pardon Unlimited and we've been working side by side with this group. So they asked me to put together a presentation, kind of, I think the last time I came here there were some questions about, you know, what does this wetland go look like and then we kind of added the rain gardens onto that. So I just wanted to show some pictures and kind of go over all that information with you. And you do have this, you know, some more detailed information in your packet, but I'll go over this in general. And what I wanted to get through with this was just to show you kind of benefits of wetlands and rain gardens based on education, environment, and economics. And then kind of finish up with, you know, who's gonna be in charge of maintaining this in general. So, you know, we've talked about the links to your master plan. I did look through that and it seems that those two, what we're planning on doing here link really well with your vision for Cedar Springs. In particular, you talk about linking neighborhoods with downtown through natural features and trails. You also mentioned capitalizing on Cedar Creek, which is a cold water trout stream. And through that, you want to protect that cold water trout stream, will impact development. So things like the native plantings, the wetland restoration, things that we're proposing here. Obviously, you guys know what site we're talking about, but Cedar Creek's right here. We have Main Street and this is behind the Fire Barn. And the next slide just shows kind of an aerial view of what we're talking about with the wetland restoration and... with the wetland restoration and the rain gardens. So this right here is Cedar Creek, and this would be the wetland restoration, it's about an acre and a half that we're proposing. And then around the edge of this, we would have six rain gardens. Now, we're not gonna make them square and rectangle like they're pictured here, um, and they'll be varying sizes. And what I want you guys to kind of get from this is that we're not speaking necessarily about, oh, this one rain garden, or this wetland restoration here. We're looking at this as a package deal. So the idea with when we do restoration, if we, when we have the library here, we have parking areas, that's gonna change how that rain falls off of that parcel entering Cedar Creek. So we look at it as more of a treatment train. So when we have that rain that flows towards Cedar Creek, it's first gonna enter into these rain gardens, which will help infiltrate that runoff into the soil, uh, replenishing our groundwater. If we do get higher rain events, or those rain gardens do get full of water, they will enter into the wetland, which again, has the same kinds of properties, slow that water, filter out those pollutants. And then that third phase will be cool, clean, uh, water entering Cedar Creek as groundwater. So first, I just wanted to talk about the restored wetlands and what that would look like. So talking about education in the, um, next slide, um, we do have some interest, I've talked with, um, uh, the Cedar Springs High School teachers and their environmental group, they're very excited about the potential for outdoor classroom. You know, they learn this stuff in books, but to have this in their community for hands-on, um, activities is wonderful. And also, I think you have to think about, you know, this isn't just for science teachers or for students, um, that are interested in environmental science, but you can also get artists out there, photography, painting and drawing. So it just offers a really unique habitat, um, in the middle of Cedar Springs. Um, and so the next thing, and, and really to me, this is a huge benefit for wetlands is the environment. Um, they're known as kind of nature's kidneys. They filter out all those pollutants before entering our waterways. Um, they're also important for wildlife habitat, most fish and amphibians have their babies and the kind of that juvenile stage in the wetlands for protection and food sources and those different types of things. And then it was interesting to me when I was doing some research on here that about forty-three percent of threatened and endangered species live in wetland habitats in the U.S. So being able to restore these wetlands, we could have potential here to bring some of those, um, species back. And then the important thing, especially since Cedar Creek is a cold-water trout stream, is the potential for more groundwater recharged and discharged back into the creek, and this is extremely important for those sensitive trout species. So kind of the economics piece, and I know that you guys were asking for pictures of what this wetland could look like, and this is something that I, I found that seems to kind of fit what it might look like, because you do have an urban area here, and there's a wetland here with lily pads and different emergent kind of plants coming up with flowers. So this is something typical that I would see probably this wetland would look like. But it's great for flood control, um, obviously, uh, that stores a large amount of water, it's kind of the sponges of our landscape. It's great for recreation, we know that the fish use this habitat, um, and then coming back out as adults into our Cedar Creek. And then when, when engineers in the past have looked to control stormwater runoff, they usually have heavy engineered stormwater practices that cost a lot of money. Now they're going to more of this, nature can do, uh, better work than kind of those man-made structures, and they're cheaper and more cost effective. So we're gonna be able to control that stormwater runoff through this wetland restoration. And so maintenance, um, the area that we're talking about was historically a wetland, so we don't need to do much to maintain it. Once we scrape down the side, kind of make that natural depression, those native wetland plants will start coming up and they will function as they used to historically. What we need to do to help maintain this wetland is to clean the trash, take care of the invasive species, kind of keep control over those. And then the Cedar Springs Community Building Development Team has said, you know, we will take on the role of making sure that this wetland area is maintained. So, um, moving on to the next site, I wanted to talk about these rain gardens and the benefits of those. So we talked about rain gardens, yeah, you can, I'm sorry. Um, and some people are like, okay, well, I think they kind of know what it means, but I'm not exactly sure, so I just wanted to get everybody on the same page of what a rain garden is and how it works. Um, and this is just a schematic to show when it rains, you know, the runoff from here, we have a small depression, and the important thing is, is this depression is planted with native plants. We can make it as formal, as wild, as colorful, there's tons of different native plants we can choose from for each of these gardens. The important thing with this is they have those deep root systems which create, um, pathways and pores in the soil that allow that runoff to infiltrate. Um, and then in case of our rain gardens, we would have a burn, but we'd also have a spillway so that if it does get overloaded from too much rain, then it would go into the wetland and kind of act as that second step of treatment before going into Cedar Creek. And the important things with these native plants is there is a bit of maintenance to get them established in the beginning, but these plants are adapted to our local conditions, our rainfall, our climate, and so they're pretty easy to maintain once they're established. So, you know, we did try out, um, putting a rain garden in, and we just had, um, wonderful turnout from the community, and I think we have an opportunity here to, um, have the community invested in this by, you know, we're not gonna just hire a contractor to come in and do all these on their own. We're having the volunteers, we're having students involved, community members, so that they can have ownership over this and understand why we're doing this, planting native plants to protect Cedar Creek from stormwater pollution. So we're tying in, you know, um, education with also doing something important for their community and taking ownership over those gardens. And as far as, um, the environment, um, the big thing is, these plants are, like I said, used to the local conditions, so the amount of maintenance you actually have to do on these gardens is a lot less than if you had lawn. And also, as we start to change that parcel with the library and parking areas, we're not exactly sure about where all that runoff is gonna puddle, what kind of problems it's gonna cause, so this could, um, potentially eliminate problems with drainage issues that you have by installing these in the first place. And then the great thing about rain gardens is they're just wonderful for the environment because, again, they have those long root systems, uh, clean out pollution, they're able to soak that water into the ground, recharge the groundwater, and they provide extremely valuable habitat for birds, butterflies and pollinators, which, as we know with bees and the monarch butterflies kind of having issues now, it's great to plant those native plants and help those populations. And here's some, a schematic that I always like to show people because it's amazing, the root systems on these plants. So this represents grass, so this is currently what we have at the location. You can see these root systems are extremely short. This does not hold back a lot of rainwater. Most of it is coming off as, um, surface runoff into Cedar Creek currently. With these native plants, you have these extremely long root systems, which create those crevices and pores in the soil, and then that is able to filter down to the soil into our groundwater, cleaning pollutants with the roots and the bacteria on the roots and also through the soil. And again, the part that we can see, it's wonderful because it provides lots of structure, lots of different flowers and colors to bring nature back into that area. So as far as rain garden maintenance, a lot of people have gotten the idea that rain gardens are no maintenance, right, because they're native plants and we don't need to do anything, uh, for them. That's not true, they are low maintenance, and especially during the first, uh, two to three years, we need to do water during dry times, we need to have some mulch to keep the weeds out, we need to have people actually pulling weeds invasive species, and we also need to make sure that, you know, replace the plants that aren't living and those different types of things. But after about that third year, those things will take over and they will be able to survive in our local conditions. Um, and again, the Cedar Springs Community Building Development Team has agreed to be in charge of rain garden maintenance, and, um, through Tribe Unlimited, we have volunteers and, um, people to help with this, with this as well. And so I just kind of wanted to show this slide because I think you guys have an extremely unique opportunity to get the community involved and feel like they're doing something positive and, and kind of that, making that connection between the importance of Cedar Creek and feeling like they're actually hands-on, being able to do something to protect it. Um, and along with this, at each of these areas are planning on some educational side, so not only in the community, but getting others off of the White Pine Trail in downtown Cedar Springs, they will see that, wow, this community really cares about their creek and these are some innovative practices that they're doing here, and we wanna talk about Cedar Springs to other communities and see this done in our community. And then I think the important thing, too, is just, you know, even if, say, people aren't interested in Cedar Creek or trout fishing or what that has to offer, this will bring kind of a new crowd of people to come out and see birds and see these plants thriving, and I think, you know, this is a really unique habitat that you don't normally see in the middle of a city. You guys have this wonderful resource running right through downtown and we can enhance it with these projects. Um, so the last slide just has my information, this is an example, which I think is beautiful, some people might think it's meaty, but it, you know, the plans for our gardens and, and, you know, we can work on that, make it as formal as you want it to be, but these are all native plants, you put birdhouses in there. Um, the nice thing about these plans also is that we can have students out there collecting seeds so that we can continue to do these native plantings just based on the seed base from these six gardens that we start here. Um, so I don't know if you wanted to add anymore, Kirk, or Tom, Perry?
I thought your book was full.
Mr. Mayor, uh, for items I and G, meaning that I'm pulling double head on that, so I would like to ask permission, step on the other side of the presentation for this.
You may.
Good evening, I'm Tom Babye, and we've been working with Steve Anderson of Anderson Metal Sculptures, and we want to put a stainless steel sculpture down in this area to lend a little bit of pizzazz to this. It'll be, uh, about twelve foot tall and heavy-duty stainless, and, uh, I think you've probably seen Steve's work. He's, uh, you know, did the-
The school, yeah.
The hawk.
The hawk.
Yeah, he does beautiful work, and we're still working with him on the concept, but it'll be, uh, uh, cat tails with dragonflies.
Great. Our own sculpture park.
And, uh, and the rain gardens and the water restoration project, Nicole mentioned how it helps with classes and stuff, but, uh, what is gonna come into play for us specifically is going to help give us avenues for maybe doing some fundraising for upheavening the proposed trail and the amphitheater. Uh, we have options for doing, like, everybody can come in and rebuild barrels.
Yeah, Mr. Hopkins, you identify what committee you're on so that everybody knows that you're the DDA, have you been working on these projects?
Yeah.
If you could.
Yeah, I'm, very, Hopkins, Chairman of the DDA, and I've been working with the, the committee, working with the Community Building Development Team.
You were at home.
Someone doesn't know, but thank you, kind of just kissing.
Hey, all right. But, uh, with the, the amphitheater being there right along by these, uh, beautiful rain gardens and the water restoration, that gives us an opportunity to have a shaded place nearby that we can do, uh, rain barrel projects where the community can come in and build their own rain barrel, and we can use that as a fundraiser to help sustain the trail as well as the amphitheater. And any extra, long after Tribe Unlimited is gone and we have to take care of these ourselves, it is going to help sustain that through classes that we can do, educating people on the herbs, plants, bugs, frogs, believe it or not, there are frog nuts out there. And they will come a long ways to see what frogs you have.
Oh, great. Exciting times, you know, the Community Development Team is doing wonderful things, and, you know, there's exciting times in the city, let's proceed.
Yeah, I think it's very exciting.
Thank you.
What, do you stay every day or walk around in the back?
Okay, um, what's the world council on item I?
Well, this is a dis-
For the rain garden.
It's a discussion.
It's a discussion only, so any other discussion?
I would make the same recommendation at the council, I would be as interested in at least approving and concept the use of the property, and then, and I would work with the Community Building Development Team on the details and work toward an agreement.
Great.
I think it sounds amazing.
Okay, thank you. Item J, discussion regarding the request of Cedar Springs Community Development Team regarding a use agreement between the City of Cedar Springs and DDA for the proposed boardwalk on city-owned property. First consideration?
Sure.
Sure. Dan, the wind over here. The trail's been part of the city master plan for quite a few years, and so what we're working on right now is just, uh, phase one, which is this site plan, and we're, we're gonna try to develop the boardwalk down to here, and because this has been part of the DDA's plan for quite a few years as far as dialogue is concerned, what we're trying to do is to empower the DDA with a cash pack, so that they are able to move ahead as a spear point representing the city of Cedar Springs, so that they, they now become an active group in Cedar Springs moving ahead, and as we move ahead towards next year, we'll be going after grants and, and like Thad said, to have the city backing for some of these grants that we think we can get available through, uh, the federal government and the state government, the city will be beneficial, once again. They're gonna be a spear point, all we're trying to do is bring them back to life, if that makes sense?
Sure.
So go ahead, Perry.
Yeah, and again, with this being, do I want me to introduce myself again?
We know who you are, thanks for that.
All right. Anyway, with that being something spearheaded by the DDA, it gives us a project versus sitting here, talking about things to do and never doing anything. And with it being at our skirts of our downtown area, it's going to open up avenues as the whole thing is stretched. The idea is to start with one section, which is financially most feasible, we're gonna do the stretch between Main Street and, uh, White Trail Pine, the start, White Pine Trail to start with, then eventually have it connect all the way over towards Seventeen Mile. And with that said, that eventually when that's all connected, that is gonna give us a, another avenue for people that don't necessarily want to drive their vehicles from over towards that end of town, come to, down into Main Street and to use our amphitheater to, uh, enjoy our creek, to enjoy the things we have downtown, like the Kent Theater, the museum, Molly Park and that, this is gonna be an adequate way of getting so people can come to these things without having to ride their bike or rock down the road. And, uh, one of our perks that we get with potential grant things is, like, if we're talking about connecting North Park with that and having that trail come down through there, uh, some of the grants, they'll actually pay for some of these educational plaques by having this, and especially since it's already in our master plan, it's something that's more conceivable for them.
That's great.
Very exciting.
A lot of exciting things happening. Again, I would discuss, you know, have the manager, we'll get with others, uh, see where it goes.
Yeah, I'll just work with, I'll just work with the DDA and the Community Building Development Team, come back with some kind of a concept that the city wants to, uh, move forward, but we can proceed, definitely.
All the discussions?
Perry, you were talking about, uh, wood boardwalk versus, I think, uh, metal or something?
It's gonna be next. We use boardwalk in the areas where you can't use the, the cheaper stuff, but, like, for at the rain garden in that area there where that's gonna be a showcase, uh, using the boardwalk in the areas to elevate above the, the flood area is gonna be, uh, serving multiple purposes. One, it's kind of hard to put anything paved through that area because of the way the water flows through, but two, it's gonna give you the elevation over top of, like that picture she showed of the water restoration area with the retaining area, and people can actually take pictures down at some of the things that we mentioned, like the frogs, the lily pads, and it gives them somewhere to stand and draw, not only take pictures, but draw and learn lessons. And people just like through the whole field of the boardwalk thing.
Yeah.
And some of them may sit on that watching whatever's going on at the amphitheater, or just sitting there watching, you know, this is gonna attract a lot of birds, which AKA is anti-bugs. You know, the, the birds, the frogs that come out, some people love to sit there and listen to frogs, sit there and listen to birds and watch the birds and stuff.
I know birding is a big, I have, I have a cousin who's traveling all over the country looking at birds, and I would think that would be part of what you could do-
Yes.
-with the educational thing as well, I hear you talking about amphibians, but I think birds could be, but the thing is, come see this spot where we're known to have X birds.
Right, and any time that the frogs come in, other wizards- And any time that the frogs come in, other wizards come in too. I'm not saying like anacondas or things like that, but I'm just saying like more, more salamanders and...
About anacondas. It's good.
Any other questions?
I was just going to say one last little thing. I would recommend that you all talk also to the Red Flannel Festival folks. They, we were talking as part of our committee about the idea of getting additional signage and they were willing to help go in on some signs of histor, we were talking about specifically historical places, that we might have a trail that goes off the White Pine Trail through town that would take us to the antique fire truck, to the museum, to with these beautiful historical signs, like Mr. Clark made for our, our, our team as well, that we would do something like that for historical places, the birthplace of Meyer. Meyer might be able to kick in some money on that, if the internet is listening. Just, I think it sounds like it fits right in with the kind of thing you're talking about with these beautiful signs. So for what it's worth.
I think just a couple other real quick things to intergo on, meaning that we haven't officially decided and aren't officially ready to present, but we hope to extend a veterans park and we got to get with Jerry and a few other people, but we really, I know there's been a long time effort. We have the Afghanistan kind of area, but we would like to extend that to a Vietnam, World War II and others. And we have a possible three locations along there, but we'd like to extend that same thing and bring that through. And then perhaps on the corner there, have a clock tower. And perhaps if we get to the point where we can kind of name that part or name that area, that could be on there. I know Perry even mentioned maybe all four sides of the clock tower could be in memory of our local veterans and then as the clock rings, it could be in memory of those people. And so we don't want that to be an afterthought. We want you to know that, that we are, we just haven't met with the people that, and we just empower the people that are already working on it. So we want to get with the people that have kind of started those projects, but we want you to know that upfront that is part of the overall theme. And then the other thing, just on our cover letter, we just worked really hard at trying to be as specific as we can on what we're asking, asking from you so that we are all on the same page and it really is a little bit more than just the use agreement. You know, we, we have five specific questions that we present in our letter to you. So we just kind of want to clarify that, that that's, we're hoping for answers on those five things. And we would like to get to the planning commission. It sounds like that is our next stop, but we're, we need direction on when we can go there. I know we need official permission from you to do something on the land, but we'd like to at least get on the planning permission. I've done, and I know this really thinks really big and, and we're thinking, we'd really like to have that amphitheater and that boardwalk and this sculpture and everything like this summer, but that may not be possible. But we do want to just make sure we have really good communication. We're supporting you in your master plan and we're moving ahead as quickly as we can within your legal limitations on what you're allowed to do. So if you could just perhaps review those five questions that we presented to you and get back with us, that would be very helpful.
Okay. We, one more thing, Mr. Paul. HRC is here and John Insel is part of our group, by the way. John isn't here. But they have already been stepping ahead on proposals and we're going to get two more bids also for the walking path. So we're already gathering that stuff, so a lot in total of three. But I just want to recognize HRC for their work and their support through our community. It's just, it just amazes me, more and more people step onboard in, in our community in Cedar Springs to help, to help better us move that master plan along. So, so thank you, HRC.
Thank you. We, like I say, we get with the manager and then we'll present next month at our next meeting and that'll be our second reading. We're going to prove, we've done at that time. So, you know, pick, I guess, your first project we want to run, which appears to be the amphitheater. So we get that hammered out and then we'll move on. And then definitely the rain garden. I think that would go in hand in hand with the new library for the runoff retention basin.
Yeah, well, we're, we're going down.
It'd be a great, great addition to that area, so.
Well, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any other comments on that?
Uh, yeah, we give you a lot of help. Yeah, well, we got to keep moving forward.
Absolutely, thank you. It was a lot of hard work of a lot of people and hopefully we keep things moving. Okay, moving along. Item K, discussion regarding proposed agreement between the City of Cedar Springs and the Red Flannel Festival, first consideration. Are there some changes to be made back and forth on this?
Um, yeah, I can, well, as, as I think the only person on the committee who's here, this is basically the previous contract with a few, like they're offering additional, they're basically saying we can use all of their licensed...
So excited.
Oh, I thought that's what we were talking about.
No, we agree with it.
I think they got flipped on this because I remember the trademark was person that came to I G.
Okay.
Okay. By mistake.
Oh, it's okay. Like, just tell me which one you want me to talk, talk about.
Well, proceed with your agreement.
Okay, so it's basically, it's basically saying that the city would be allowed to use the logos for non, for anything that basically doesn't make money in these capacities. I mean, I'm not going to read the whole thing here, it's a little bit long. But, uh, and the city would provide in-kind services. Dan Clark, who isn't here, but he spoke with the folks at MML and looked at what other communities with large festivals do. And to a great extent, this is the way they do it. And it's the way it was done historically for a very long time in this community. We're very willing to take it back with tweaks, the adjustments. As a committee, we'll be meeting again.
This is the first draft?
This is the first draft.
Our attorney would need to look at it. Okay, Mr. Powell, do you have any questions with this?
Just that I talked to the manager in Hartford and he said they have fifty festivals and it doesn't even, the Blues Music Festival, although they have it ten times, is only one festival. And they provide all the in-kind services for it. They have very tight rules about picking up trash and their big concern is that the barricades are safe where they're supposed to be, that the people that come to town are safe and just they have strict guidelines. The City of Sparta also has, provides in-kind services for their festivals. Same thing, they want the people to be safe, the barricades to be where they're supposed to be. They have strict guidelines on what they're supposed to do and not supposed to do. They meet with the, the staff and they have to bring it to the city council. And that's what Sparta does for their festivals and they have a lot of festivals too. And they have a $5,000 cap on their in-kind services, so.
And we can certainly, we didn't, I just said, just to respond, we didn't put a number in there because we weren't quite sure what that should be. Historically speaking, we, we were kind of coming to counsel for direction on some of that. Historically speaking, for, if you go back in the previous budget allocations from the city, it was anywhere between 52 and 3,400 in in-kind services that was allocated. You know, we can put a number in there. Do you know what part of the budget that came in? Um, it was, well, it was, it was allocated through like, because again, it was in-kind services. So it was through GPW, it was through police thing, it was through, um, the festival felt very strongly that they are, and again, they're dealing with Kent County regarding police thing, but they felt very strongly that they're dealing, they were paying for the beer tent. If that was the thing that they...
Festival paid for the beer tent.
The pay, festival will pay for the beer tent. That, that's not part of this.
No, the police thing is no part of this contract.
So, not even for the parade and the... I don't know that that's necessarily, they were still getting those numbers from Kent County. Part of that was not being sure exactly what that looks like.
This is preliminary, yeah?
Yes.
We'll have more numbers next month.
I guess my concern is that all these folks that we invite to our city for our party, that we should make sure that they're safe.